Twenty town plan commission please come to order. Would you please stand for the pledge to the flag? George, would you lead us?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seems like it's been a year since we've been here.
Just about.
Yeah, last year. Still wait last year.
Almost forget the routine. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here this evening. Let the record...
So tonight?
It'll be later, you'll have time. Let the records reflect the members that's here. The commission members should have received the draft copy of the minutes for November 27, 2017. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
No, sir.
If not, will entertain a motion?
Hold on a second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, single five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Moving right through the list. No action items, no ordinance or agreements. Jim, shall we come right up with you on your report?
All right. There's gonna be a theme tonight.
It's gonna... Excuse me?
There will be a theme to our discussions this evening.
Themes?
So the first one, the sales lot expansion, we saw that a few months ago. They would like to use their portion of the 20-foot driveway that's on that 1936 plat for landscaping. They provided a, I guess, legal opinion that they had right to half of that alley and then the other contiguous property owners had right to half, the other half. And I should say driveway because that's what it's called on the plat, not an alley. So Jay and I have kind of hashed it over a little bit and while not disagreeing with their case law reference, it's still not clear that they can't show that as part of his property on the plat, on the site plan. So we came up with the idea of putting a note on the plat, just basically a what-if scenario in the event that someone did come forward to contest ownership of that in the future, that he would be obligated to still maintain the appropriate screening between the residential and the commercial. So say Stanley Reivers' long-lost great-great-grandson shows up and lays claim to the property and has the documentation to support it, he potentially could have to move the landscaping. And to address that possibility, however slim it is, we would put a note on the plat to show that he would still need to maintain an appropriate screen between the commercial and residential. So if you guys are okay with that, we can come up with the exact language to put on it. Adam Pino from the Hitchman is comfortable with that idea. It lets him move forward. It gives us a little bit of protection just in the event that down the road somebody might show up. As I said, I think it's unlikely because we know he spent money to research it and his attorneys have come up kind of empty-handed on it. So that's a plan. It could let the site plan keep moving and, you know, put that mystery strip of ground to some kind of use. So no formal action on that. I would like to get consensus one way or the other if you get around a little bit.
Two, please.
Yeah, cause he owns this one as well.
Okay, so what you're saying then, what are we doing with the three other, three properties? Are we giving them the right to use that as an easement or to use it whatever they see fit?
Well, they can just reference the same case law and make the same claim he did.
Exactly. The idea would be that everybody contiguous to it gets half of the width of it, you know, so the Maryland Avenue house that's on the cul-de-sac that kind of goes back...
Right.
Would get a little chunk of it. The Hitchman would get pretty much that whole side because they own...
They own the other house, right.
And then the house that fronts Commerce Street next to where the curve cut is would get, you know, the linear footage along their side yard. Now, it's not, nothing's being deeded to anybody. It's basically just acknowledging that this never got deeded to anyone after the parent property and, you know, people are gonna use it as an extension of their yard, basically.
So, I mean, what if...
Probably what's been happening for the last 50 years. But we just haven't, until the Hitchman, we haven't had anybody come up to try to, you know, make any kind of real claim to it.
So what if he wanted to deed it? I mean, who would, what would give him any authority to do so? Would the city have to give him that authority? It's, he'd have to have a séance to go to Reivers and...
This is where I punt.
So this is, this is a bad situation we're gonna try to make the best of and it applies here but kind of all over these places. You remember when we talked about this last, we said it was an alley because that's what we kind of... Well, when the deed research was done by their lawyer, it doesn't say alley, it says driveway.
That's right.
Okay. And when we talked about it last, we knew that the city might have a claim, but we couldn't really prove it because there's nothing in writing except the plat saying what we thought said alley is driveway. So the comment of, do we have anything to do with this? We, the city, don't really have a possessory interest in it at all because it says driveway, so therefore that's not a public street, that's not a public dedication. So move forward with the new theory is that we, the city, aren't owners, now we, the city, are regulators, you all. And you're having what could be a disputed piece of land that might be owned by several people, you don't know, but you're letting somebody use it because they came up, you're not letting them use it, that's different. You're letting them fulfill their requirements on it as if it were theirs because they did the title work to say, it's as much mine as the next guy. And there's no way for them to get a deed from anyone because that's impractical. So the only way to resolve this would be one owner suing the other owners, saying, I own it and this is the reason why, and I don't think they would be successful. So we tried to figure out how we can accommodate this because it's all imaginary lines out there. That's really what it comes down to, is nobody really wants to put a driveway or drive back there or any of that stuff, which was what we had talked about before. This is just a matter of putting trees in, which are whatever he wants to do. And so we cover ourselves by saying, if you ever have a problem and you don't own this, you're gonna have to redo this somewhere that you do own it, but that was the best we could come up with.
So let's jump back 30 years to where that property was on our maps of our intention of improving it with a street.
Yep.
Would we have run into a similar issue of, do we claim eminent domain on that or what would we have had to do?
Well, if, 30 years being when this was done, let's say, I mean, I guess that's the nexus.
Well, I know, 30 years ago, there was a map, an active map we had that showed that that was a plan.
So I don't know when it was subdivided. That's the problem. But whenever it was subdivided and that was shown, that land should have been deeded with an easement to the city.
Right.
And that hasn't happened all along. We just don't do that. We're starting to do that. I mean, that's not a, that's not an old days thing. For example, what's the place where there's no bridge? Roberts Mill?
O'Brien.
O'Brien. That area underneath of it is the same thing. City maintains it, city deals with it, but there's no deed even though it shows on the plat it's supposed to go to the city. It's never followed through on. And that place is, that corporation's defunct. So it's just, it's been a bad way of doing business and we're not doing that anymore. So for example, Creekside, you've, you know, when we're dealing with that, one of the things before we close out is we need the deeds given to us and we need them recorded before we close out. So that's moving forward. But going back to your question, councilman, is that if we wanted it, we'd have to try to get eminent domain to take it.
Right.
And we'd have to pay for it.
Right.
That's...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and it's difficult because we've never used it. That's the biggest problem, Paul. You know, we say it's a city thing because it's on the map, but we never used it, we never did it. It's no different than when the city put the bypass on the map. It was all across private people's property.
But that was laid out there.
Yeah, but we never acquired the property.
Right, that was laid out, like Maryland Avenue was laid out, like those things.
That was part of the plan.
And it just wasn't followed through on and so the question, the larger question that you guys need to think about, maybe not with this, is what do we do with these phantom streets that are in the old section that are not gonna get built on? Because like Maryland Avenue, that ends in a cul-de-sac with houses on it that we don't own. I mean, somebody else owns that, so even if you said, one day I want to connect Maryland Avenue to 194, that's not a simple thing, that's a big thing.
Right.
So how do you move forward in an old section of town like that?
But we have one of these alleys right here next to Design Associates.
Right. We did research on that and that's partly owned by Design Associates because they say they have title on it, but it's never been taken over by the city, it's private completely. And that's better because at least there's an alley. I mean, you drive back there, but these other ones are, they're really just only on paper.
How would you feel about this if you owned that last house on Maryland Avenue, if you lived there? How would you approach this?
I guess the thing is, is that between two property owners, I assume something's happening out there now. Somebody's mowing some fire, I mean, somebody's doing things because they think they own it or they're maintaining it. And I guess the fairest thing would be that everybody gets half. Everybody acts like they own up to half, which is what this guy's gonna do, I guess, is he's gonna stake his claim to half and put his thing up, which leaves the other half to the people. And I was concerned in the beginning, like you had the concerns of a road going through there, because then the question is, who can go on the road? Is it just my road or can you go on the road?
Well, until Maryland Avenue, I mean, before that was given away, this would have connected...
Right.
And made a circle around there.
Right.
And that last house on Maryland Avenue doesn't have any access already at all.
On the thing, right.
Little narrow driveway into the front of their house.
Mm-hmm.
And I feel that this commission has a responsibility to help to protect people who can't protect themselves.
That's, that's your goal, is to watch out for the people that aren't sitting here?
That's exactly the way I feel, that we should, we need to protect people that can't protect themselves.
But they bought that with the understanding of what they had when they purchased that lot.
That's water over the dam.
Well, that's the whole issue now. So what do we need the Hitchman to present on their preliminary drawing to show their half or how this is supposed to be laid out?
In my mind, the way it would be is he's just going to show what he would do and he would be counting that piece, which I would imagine will be hashed or something like that to show you all what it is, as if he had it himself. And then he'll be showing that areas where his buffer's gonna be, because that's what he's doing with it, so the planning buffer. Which is why it's less than the road because the planning buffer could be removed if somebody ever had a problem, whereas the road, there would be a fight on day one of who's allowed to go down that road. You just know that.
Why does he want to even use that land when it doesn't belong to him? Why would he even consider using it and wanting to plant it?
It's a little bit more grounded, it's touching you.
Yep.
That's why he plants it.
And he thinks he does have up to half of it.
Well, he's just gonna, he's just gonna expand his business that much closer to those houses.
Well, he's close anyway, so...
Right.
Well, I know.
We can't get really closer because you still need the 20 feet, right? And the buffer's gonna be within that, on that 20 feet.
That's the, the plan is for the buffer to be within the 10 feet of his half of the driveway, the 10 feet that would be his half of the driveway.
So he's allowed to get that close.
So he claims his 10 feet. This house on Maryland has a nice fence around their backyard. They're like, well, if you're taking 10 feet, I want 10 feet, I'm gonna move my fence on to that 10 feet. What do you say when they come to you for a fence permit?
It's not a buffer.
That's, that's gonna be, yeah, a different, a different issue.
Right, because, I mean, now they're slicing and dicing this paper alley.
Yeah.
And, I mean, he got to put his bushes there, why can't I put my fence there?
I mean, I think, it's not my call, but I would think that they get to put their fence there.
Right, with the same knowledge of, if this is disputed, your fence goes away.
Then why can't the Hitchman put a fence there?
I mean, I think he's...
You just said it both ways.
Because it's gonna be a buffer from residential to commercial.
I know what you're saying, but he just said it both ways.
Well, I mean, that if you divide it down the middle, the buffer's on one side of the 10 feet and the other side of the 10 feet will be the other guys, but we're not giving it to them, it's just they're taking it.
Well, we're not asking the other guy to put a buffer in.
Well, I'm just saying, when we have someone come to us wanting to put up a fence on property that's not theirs but they're maybe entitled to.
That would be the example that we should focus on, is that, forget paper alleys and streets, that makes it hard. Think about if a property owner came in, a developer, and they said, here's my lot, here's the survey, but we're kind of unsure about this section. And we say, well, you know, that looks like it's awful a lot, the line is on somebody else's property. And they're like, yeah, well, we're not really sure. And the neighbor's not sure, nobody's sure. They'd have to resolve that.
Right.
You wouldn't let them just do the willy-nilly.
But that's when you know who the neighbor is.
But these people have tried to resolve it, given us everything we can, and at the end of the day, I mean, I get their argument, but I'm not, I don't think that they, by their argument, get to use this, like entitled to it. It's more of, if you guys are okay with it happening, you're not letting them use it, you're just letting them put their required buffer there.
So someday, two parties will be at odds and have to spend a lot of money because we allow it to happen.
Well, definitely the first part of your sentence is true. Whether you allowed it to happen, you allowed somebody to plant there. But if they don't plant there and they're doing whatever there, what if they decide that they're gonna put a shed back there and the shed's five feet off the middle instead of 10 feet off the middle? It's the same thing. But yeah, you're gonna create a potential problem.
Right, we're gonna create...
Because this is not resolved, this is just kicked down the road. Solves Hitchman's problem and I guess the hope is, it's not that big of a problem, so nobody's complaining from now, nobody will complain later. It's tough.
So what if we require Hitchman to stay back 30 feet?
No.
No.
No, not on his own property.
No.
He should be able to use his property.
Well, then he should be able to...
He's using someone else's property now. He wants, wants to use someone else's property.
Well, if you get, you got this 20-foot driveway and he's entitled to 10 feet, right?
Yes.
So he says.
So he says.
I don't think he is.
But if we require him to put the buffer at 20 feet, that would, that would still leave that paper or that driveway as a 10-foot open space.
If you recall, as part of his plan, the reason he was really spilling over was for stormwater management, correct? Because that's right up against his order.
The concept, right, the concept shows the...
That's a reason, that's only a reason.
I understand.
Working back from York Street, it would be, you know, the paved lot, the stormwater management, and then the landscape buffer.
Right.
Working, working from York Street back to the driveway.
Right. And his, his plan originally had that stormwater management because the way it's graded already, right up against his property line, which means in order to do his buffer would have to be conveniently on that driveway.
I mean, they certainly, they're only at concept stage at this point.
Right.
You know, certainly things could be shifted and we talked about that as a possibility. You know, obviously they're trying to get as much, you know, a reasonable amount of square footage for the new display lot while still preserving some side yard for the brick house that's on the corner there that they also own, keeping the options open to potentially if they ever decide they don't want to own that rental property anymore. You know, so they're, they're trying to not go all the way up to the dwelling that's up on the corner, which is part of why the stormwater is where it is off to the, yeah, the driveway side. But they could, as an alternative, they could push the lot farther up the hill towards Commerce Street and reconfigure the stormwater. It still would be in that vicinity just because of the lay of the land, kind of makes that the most practical area for it.
Why should stormwater management have any bearing on letting him own roach on additional property?
That's, and, yeah, I mean, we can, we can argue it either way. I guess I, I see it as a strip of no man's land that's gonna be put to some use and give somebody some, you know, some ownership, so to speak, of it. And, you know, with that comes the obligation to maintain it. There are enough other little mystery spots of ground in the city that people don't know and things like that that create more headaches than I think letting the people use, you know, the half of it that's contiguous to their property. I think that this avoids a problem more than creates one.
Well, do we have any recommendations or Jay, do you have us a direction?
Well, I mean, I like to make it black and white, I mean, for you, that a choice this way, that, right?
I see you, it's gonna be gray.
Well, either you buy the argument that we've, and I don't want to be anybody's salesman, I'm not trying to sell this to you and I'm not trying to talk it against it, but you get the argument that this is always gonna be a problem, it's gonna be hard to resolve because nobody's gonna want to resolve it. And he's tried to resolve it as best he can, so if you say, I get it, it's a problem, but this is the best use of it and it's, it's a today use, it doesn't resolve the issue, then you can go with that side. Or you can just say, look, we are not comfortable in somebody using disputed or unclaimed, it's not disputed, it's just undocumented property. Show us a court order that says you own it and then you can do it. Because what he's given us is his best effort. It was a title report and then it was a lawyer's letter saying, look at this statute, and it was kind of like, put A plus B equals C, don't you get, this is how this is an argument. Well, if we were judges, we would be sitting here deciding this question of who should get this. But we're not. We're just deciding, can somebody use it? And if they didn't own it in the first place, we'd never let them do it, right? I wouldn't let them put something on your property, I would just never let that happen.
Well, Jay, how can, how can it become a problem? How can this become a problem?
Well...
It's already a problem.
Makes it a problem.
It's a problem down the road.
Come now, George. It's already a problem by him by...
Well, we're allowing a problem to exist.
Yeah, you're gonna create more of an issue, but I mean, it's a problem because it's gonna always be unresolved. It'll manifest itself into a greater problem when they do something with it.
But if you do what Jim says, it could be another 30 years till somebody decides they want something, or ever, never.
They'll never do it. You know the reality is that, is that the other guy will mow up to that and it'll just be forgotten somewhere else.
Yes, I agree.
And then they use it continuously for 20 years and they'd have a claim of adverse possession and it would solve the title problem down the road.
How about a memorandum of understanding between him and the other property owners?
Well, you'd never get away from that.
If you did, the question is, do all of them have the ability to make a deal on this in the first place? That's the thing, is that...
Right, because maybe nobody owns it.
Right. Remember, we started off with, we thought we owned it and we were like, we can't give it to you, but we can say we're giving you whatever we have and it may be nothing. So the problem is, is that no one here can make a deal with it and that's what George's position is. If no one can make a deal with it, how can you let one guy just say, I'm taking it?
That's the way I feel now.
So then we should require him to take legal action to present us with some type of ownership of it.
And that's not gonna happen.
Okay.
Then where do we stand? Or actually, we can't take an action on his plan until something is said.
Then when somebody doesn't mow it for a few weeks and they call the city...
Right.
And that's what's gonna happen. If somebody didn't cut his grass, who do I send a letter to?
Jay.
Yeah, right. I'll build my small house there.
So, so what'll happen is, you know, we'll have Eckers or whoever go out and mow it on the city's dime and we won't have anybody to bill because we don't know whose it is. And I don't, I'm not gonna put in my budget any money to try to figure out whose it is. I guess, I guess that could be a windfall.
I really, I really believe that the city should maintain that.
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Here's, here's my thought. Think of a, we found a wallet. It's got 80 bucks in it. We put up signs, found wallet. After so long, no one responds. We each get 20 bucks because we found it, no one claimed it. Can we post disputed property? If you have or believe you have interest in this, come show us why. No one comes forward, we say, okay, split.
Well, yes to the first part.
Can you create a deed out of that? It's undisputed, no one's laying claim, we tried.
The whole thing is good to the point where we're giving title to somebody because we're not the arbiters of that. See, the thing is, is that this problem existed and has only come to our attention because of what Hitchman wanted.
Right.
We are not in the dispute except for reviewing Hitchman's plan. That's the only reason we're even talking about this. So the idea of telling Hitchman, go to your neighbors and find this out, that's fine, nobody has a problem with it, that makes you feel better because they say, hey, we don't have a problem with it. But the next step of somebody acquiring title is not up to us to deal with. I mean, we're forcing them to a table. We can't write a deed to do it for them. They would get their own people to do it. See what I'm saying, is so that you can go through the steps, but you're not gonna get the resolution. And I guess that's the, if you want to feel like you've covered every base, you notify all the property owners, which you kind of do as part of the plan for view process, that this is going on and if you have a problem, they come in here and say, hey, I don't like this because I think I own that too. And you say, you're, I'm not gonna get in the middle of this, you can't put it on any undis, any spot that's in dispute, something like that. If that makes you feel better.
Well, basically, we just won't take any action until we get proof of ownership.
That's the black and white version.
That's the black and white version, right there, George.
Is that, don't, you can't put it on that property until you prove to me that you absolutely own it. I need a deed that shows that or a court order that gives you title. And that's never gonna happen, you know that. I mean, that, I'm telling you that they are not gonna go to court.
And then they'll have to modify their...
Their plan.
Their site plan.
Be 10 feet clo, everything will be 10 feet closer.
And it wouldn't be putting us out on a limb.
But you're gonna have a norm mode piece of property.
Well, who says now we don't have a norm mode piece?
Yeah, that's the question. I'm looking at the map here and it looks like it's been maintained.
It's being maintained, it is.
Yeah, it's not clear who. And it looks, also looks from this aerial shot that there was at least a garden in back at some point.
There did used to be.
I like how things stick around. The image is still there.
Now, Jay and Jim, since we proved the, that's preliminary, the...
Concept?
Concept. Where do we go from, from there if we don't go, if we can't go any further?
If, I mean, if you, if you do not want to let them put the, the buffer on the 10 feet...
Right.
They'll just, you know, push it, push it back and probably extend the lot up the hill a little bit to try to make up the square footage that they lose by pushing everything back 10 feet. I think that still is gonna remain, you know, true to the concept, the concept is just a rough idea. So, you know, it's still gonna be a, a display lot, it's still gonna tie into the existing site, you know, in the same basic manner. It's just gonna be shifted over a little bit. That's not, that's not huge, you know, a huge departure where they would have to come back and revise the concept or anything. Now, if, now if they come back and decide that they're gonna reconfigure how it connects to the rest of the site and they're gonna put their stormwater someplace completely different and, you know, that may be a little more that we come back and, you know, want, want to see the concept or even...
Do we need to send them a letter?
But I, in this, in this case, you know, if, if stuff just gets shifted over 10 feet, that's not, that's not really a departure from the concept enough to make them come back and redo the concept.
Right.
That, that's, I mean, it's still, you know...
Do we need to give them some type of notification of what...
I mean, I can certainly advise them...
I wouldn't want them to spend a lot of money and time on a site plan with their thinking that they're gonna use 10 feet of that.
And that's what they want you to know.
And they're on, they're on hold right now, pending the consensus from tonight, you know, as to what we thought about their, you know, the documentation their attorney provided and, and... You know, the documentation their attorney provided and, and. Whether or not they could use that ten-foot section of the driveway or not. So they're, they haven't continued on with the preliminary plan, because they're waiting for an answer on that.
So we get the consensus from us, from the members here. We're not gonna take any action till somebody comes up with proof of ownership, or. They redo the site plan. To exclude the ten-foot easement in the driveway. Is that agreeable from George? Bradley, Holly?
Yeah.
Could you say it?
As long as that doesn't allow them to use it right away.
That's what I'm saying, not until they give proof. Bradley?
I feel we.
Does that confine what we need?
That's what they wanna know.
All right. Let's move forward then with whatever else we have.
Alrighty, um, the second thing that was in my report. Was, um, the, the concept for addition of a crematory to Myers-Durboro Funeral Parlor. Um, they had purchased the brick building to the rear of the site, um, and the, the parcel that brick building is on. Um, and the plan is to. Put a building addition onto that and have a crematory there. Our code is silent on crematories specifically. And here's where tonight's theme comes in, because this afternoon in talking with their surveyor. Uh, found out that there is a twelve-foot alley.
Proof of the ownership.
That, um, that separates the parking lot and funeral parlor from the parcel that has the brick building that, that. Is going to house the crematory. So, um, the, the, the plan that we had kind of cobbled together when Jay and I met and, and. Uh, was that we would. Ask that the properties be consolidated, and that we could, since the code is silent on crematories. That we would simply look at that as an accessory use to the funeral parlor if it was all on one parcel. Well, that's not gonna be on one parcel, because there's an alley separating them.
Does that alley have a name?
That was this afternoon's news.
I don't think so.
It's a paper alley.
I know of.
Tell us about the alley. I, I wanna hear about the alley.
So, um.
So do I.
Really? Are you talking about the one that goes from Mill towards the railroad tracks?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have not had a chance to, I just. Found this out this afternoon. I have not had a chance to pull deeds for all the adjacent properties. But having looked at.
Be oriented here. That's over now.
Having looked at people's deeds for the alley we talked about earlier, next to design associates between that and. The Red Door Boutique property. And.
George.
And having similar language on my own deed, um, where I have. Use in common with others, or use, shared use with others for a twelve-foot alley to the rear of my property. Um, that the language is also on my next door neighbor's plat, uh, or deed, rather. It, it's not unusual in the older part of town for there to be, you know, a reference in the deed for the alley, but it doesn't show up on a plat. So, again, it's another one of those situations. It probably was never deeded to anyone when the, when the lots were created on either side of it. Um, just like the one in this nineteen thirty-six plat we were just talking about. Except this one probably goes back longer. So, uh, that said, the idea of consolidating the, the properties is pretty much off the table. But. In, in looking over the situation and. As I mentioned in the, in my report, um. We realized when, when digging into things that. With the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan on the land use map, and if anybody wants to see it, I brought all the maps up tonight, but. You may recall, we talked about this, you know, urban mix area that was gonna be kind of in. The industrial area, the glass property, that was surrounded on three sides by downtown business. So, and then we never developed the zoning code to support that land use, so it still is industrial. And that's the case for, for this piece of property also. What I didn't recall, though, was on our comprehensive plan map. On the east side of the railroad tracks, we had. Indicated that that was going to be rezoned to downtown business. And then the west side of the tracks was going to be this new urban mix zone that we haven't come up with yet. So, we actually have a zoning map error involved. So, if we are able to, in a timely manner, adopt. Our new zoning map, and we have a draft up here, and I will email one around to you as well, so that you can look at it at home. To kind of scrutinize it on, in your own time. But we really wanted to get the properties that have been annexed recently onto our zoning map. It's been a couple of years since we annexed the Stumptown properties, and we didn't do it right away then, because. We thought we were gonna annex Ballinger Park and, and that was gonna happen a little quicker, but it took a while. And then when we went to county to ask them to update it for us. They were in the midst of updating all their GIS data, so they didn't wanna produce a map until they got all that validated. So, we finally have a, a zoning map now, a draft zoning map. That we would like to see adopted, hopefully in the next couple of months. Um, and when we do that, we could also correct the error for this little strip to the east of the railroad tracks that was supposed to be downtown business. So, back to the crematory. If that piece is now zoned downtown business. The code provides for funeral parlors and mortuaries. A mortuary being a place that bodies are stored. Um, and the crematory does have that component to it. So I think that that would still fit under the umbrella of a permitted use within the downtown business district. So. Rather than it being a, an accessory use on the big consolidated property. I think it still is an acceptable use in downtown business. But we need to get the map updated for all that to kind of fall into place. So. So kind of, kind of, you know, last minute scrambling here. But that's, that's the, that's the idea that, that. That I'm hoping we can move forward with, is, is just recognizing it under the, the downtown business district regulations. Uh, because that's what we had intended for that property.
What is our timeframe?
Where's the, uh?
Well, Justin Durborough is here, if he can probably field some questions as far as the operation.
And that's a crematory.
Would you come to the?
Is this the alley they're talking about? What's that had to do with it?
We're, as far as a time, uh, frame, we have a drawing, which I did give. Jim has a drawing of what we hope to do with that building. That's been going on for. Probably I've been working on that for two years, I guess. It's just been slow, slow going, but I think we've got that. Pretty well how we would like, you know, what we'd like to do with that. It needs a lot of work back there. Right now, that, the old. If you're familiar with that brick building that's back there, the old Tony Town Grain and Supply, it just, it's a shell, basically. There now, just a brick building, but. Um, you know, I think we're willing, it's, it's, I've owned that property for, I don't know if it's been four or five years, so. I'm not in a hurry, I mean, as, as long as it takes for this to play out, I'm fine. It's taken me this long to get to this point. We're not in a hurry or a rush. Um, and I know things take time, so. I guess, you know, we'd like this, I'd like to see things move ahead, so that we could get some. Bids from contractors and things, but I'm sorta hesitant to do that till we know we can. You know, can sort of proceed with things there, so. Hopefully, in, in the next, in this coming year, I'd like, like to see something happen with that building.
Which way are they gonna enter into that? The building, which way are you gonna come into it? Through the funeral home parking lot, or down Mill Avenue, or?
Well, base, the public entrance is gonna be, um. The way we have it drawn would be from the funeral home side, from the parking lot. I mean, I. I, I just found out about this alleyway there too, myself, but we sort of use that back through there for parking now. The public parks there, but it would be facing, um, Baltimore Street is where the new entrance would be. You know, for folks to get into that building.
The old, the old driveway did come in from Mill Avenue down to that. But that driveway, when I bought them two houses there, was never taken off as a driveway, they told me. I mean, I was told by Ted Jester and. Bill, Jimmy Stone Seifer, they're both dead now, so you can't, we can't go back to them. That that, that is actually a yard. When they sold out at, at Grain Supply, they asked me if I could park in our, my yard. I said, it's not my yard. That's your drive, no, no, that's yours.
So how far down do you, you own the brick building, how much is that lot? I mean, what lot does that?
It basically goes right up against the.
Feed Mill?
The Mill.
And then how far towards Mill Avenue?
To, to where the blacktop actually separates to a new and an old blacktop.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's not real defined, but it's an odd shaped.
Yes, it is.
It doesn't go all the way out to Mill Avenue?
No.
You got the houses there, right?
Well, the alley's there, but.
Now, it, it kinda looks like it actually doglegs to Mill Avenue, according to. The real property.
What about the scales?
Parcel map.
Huh?
The scales?
The scales is bought by that guy that owns the garages now. That's not.
Right, that's, that's not part of it.
And, and actually, my yard is what everyone uses as a driveway, because Peters. Keeps a trailer in the actual driveway. They bought them houses to make the driveway wider. And they never deeded it off. Which I would work with someone to deed it off to make sure the wide driveway is there, but. It's, you know. They're actually driving on me, not their actual driveway.
You mean the road, the road is on you.
I don't care, cuz we park out back.
So anyway, back, so there's no, no really time limit for you, other than you wanna see things keep moving forward. What's, what would our time limit be to redo the, the map?
Well, we have, we have a draft map, um. To, to review. And Claire emailed me a PDF and, and, uh. Five files, versions of it, that if I, if I haven't yet, I will email out to you guys, so that you can, I would like everybody to kind of scrutinize it. And see if you spot any, anything that we might have missed, because I know I spotted like a, a mislabeled street that we. Missed in two thousand and ten, when we did the zoning map update. Um, and obviously, we missed this little sliver that was supposed to be downtown business. I guess because we were thinking urban mix, and that that would come later. Um, you know, so I, I would like to have, you know, give you guys the opportunity to look at it at your leisure. And spend a little time looking it over. But, um. You know, once we're comfortable with it, um. We'll need to do a, a resolution. The, the mayor and council actually would adopt the new zoning map. But we would, you know, typically what happens is we would, you know, transmit it to them. We would say, you know, we're happy with this. You know, and transmit it to them for, for formal adoption.
Hold on, George. He purchased, he purchased land. We need to see the meats and the bounds of this thing.
Well, and, yes, and.
We need to see the meats and the bounds of his property.
And there is a drawing for it, that I did not bring up tonight, because we didn't have opportunity to post the property after. Jay and I met to discuss how we could make things work before we knew about the alley. So the property hadn't been posted yet, so I didn't want to actually present the concept plan this evening. That we were gonna hold off for, for last month, or for next month.
Okay, so this doesn't, this wouldn't have any effect on the comprehensive plan, right? Independent and all within the city?
Right, yes.
Okay.
He actually got enough room to do what he wants to do.
Yeah, well, a site plan would have been our next step, to see the site plan, so we have a better understanding, or, like say, our boundaries.
Yeah, so. I have like no problems with this. Okay, and let me give you my rationale. I've tried to do like law light instead of lawful here, but. The adoption of the zoning map is like a formality. Because it is what it is, and we didn't rezone the properties by just drawing on the map. When we rezoned the properties, what, ten years ago or more? We had a resolution that said, this property is changing to this. I mean, it was in writing. So just the fact that it's not on the zoning map does not mean, it's not easy to use, right? People can't tell. But it doesn't change the underlying legalities of it. For the same purpose of, the annexations are in town. When we annexed them in, it said what the zoning was, and that's the zoning, regardless of whether they show on our map or not. So, take that fact. The next fact is, there is a principle in law called, you, your zoning is either a change or mistake. You've heard that. Change or mistake doctrine, okay? There's a change in the character of the neighborhood, or there's an actual mistake on the document. And that's usually what a citizen would argue in court, that the zoning should be changed, because, hey, there was a mistake. So it's the citizens brings that to us. We, the government who run the zoning, recognize there was a mistake. And the mistake is the, the map's colored wrong. That's pretty much it. There's a different color on the map, and it shouldn't be there. But the underlying zoning isn't a problem. So, in my mind, the adoption of the map is a nice thing, but it doesn't control the actual zoning that happens. And the alley issue, you know, sends us on a different path, because we already talked about an alley. It has nothing to do with the alley, except that we had a plan that wouldn't even involve any of this, because everything would have been one big lump, which can't happen. So you take that out, take the alley out, it's just a matter of it's the wrong color. So I don't think there's really any reason to hold anything back. That, what, what he was looking for was, is this use allowed on this piece of property? And he's saying that, yeah, if the map was colored right, yeah, the code allows it, as long as you all think, what was it, mortuaries and funerals or something like that. Are like this. I don't think, how could you out, get something closer than that? So I just, I mean, it's almost a non-issue for us, and if the council gets around to adopting the map, that shouldn't hold anybody up. So, that's my thought.
All right, we all good so far? Holly?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, why the alley?
So, well, let me just. The property that we're talking about, the one you purchased. It's addressed, it, its address is Mill Avenue. It fronts Mill Avenue. There's a dogleg that connects it to Mill Avenue.
There is?
Yes. Absolutely is.
But where is it at?
Well, we'll see it on the site plan.
Yeah, we'll see it on the site plan, but yeah, it's, it does connect to Mill Avenue.
Jim, you wanna continue on with your report?
Next alley.
Next alley? Thanks, Henry.
I wanna see a, I wanna see a picture of it.
Me too. I drive through there all the time. Thank you, everybody. Yeah. Yeah, I. I just thought that was a part of, I knew it was an alley.
Does, uh?
That was really an alley theme, I would imagine. I could share other alley discussions.
Where, what's it, this is gonna be a fast night, I don't know now.
That's what I thought too, I told my wife.
Does he actually have access to the rear of that lot?
The, the concept that, that he submitted does show a strip of ground going out to Mill Avenue. So, he would have access via his existing parking lot to Baltimore Street, um, as well as the Mill Avenue side.
There is a strip there?
Yes.
It's wider than it's supposed to be, but there is a strip.
It. Yeah, it doesn't.
Doesn't show that, does it?
There, I mean, it does, his concept does show that the twelve-foot, a twelve-foot alleyway on it. But it doesn't, that does not line up like exactly with the property boundaries.
That's a thirty-foot alley, I bet.
All right, let's move on, Jim.
Okay. Alrighty, um. So, Meads Crossing, uh, actually did record in December, late December. So Meads Crossing actually did record in December, late December. So they are actually moving ahead. Their grading permit is in the works. We've signed off on it at the city. And actually held a meeting today with their contractor and the firm that's going to be doing construction inspection to, you know, make sure that the city infrastructure is installed correctly. That's going to be, our K&amp;K is going to be our agent. So we need to work out some of the details on that still, but today was, I guess, a little bit of a kickoff sort of meeting, I suppose. So they are, they are moving ahead with their- Moving ahead with, with their grading. So they're going to grade the whole site and then the infrastructure, of course, for just phases one.
Who's doing the grading?
Gray &amp; Sons is their, their primary contractor.
What, do we know when we're going to hear from them again regarding the new elevations?
No.
Okay. Because that's really the next thing we're supposed to get from them.
Right, will be the town, new townhouse elevations and-
The large-
Right, the large lot.
That'll be another year or two.
Changes and Ryan ends up doing them, but I think Ryan has said they're not interested, so. But who knows by the time they're ready, what might happen.
When you say grading, are you talking about the entire area or just phase one?
They're going to grade, my understanding is they're grading the whole, they're mass grading the whole site.
The whole site?
So they're, they're putting up their erosion and sediment controls now. And that, that's not unusual to, to grade the overall site. Meadow Brook did that. I, well, Creekside was all one phase, well-
Just A and B, we gave them proof.
The vast majority of Creekside was one phase. Technically, the little area where the existing ranch house was, was a separate phase. But, you know, they didn't put any dwellings up in that phase. So Creekside was pretty much one phase. But Carol Vista, you know, was four phases, but they did mass grading for the entire site. That's, that's pretty much the-
Quality equipment's there, yeah.
So that, that's the plan for Meads also. So they're going to do the, the mass grading and then the detail, you know, the, the fine grading and the infrastructure for 1A. So, so they're, they're moving ahead. We'll talk about the, hopefully have time to talk about chapter 11 of our comp plan, a little bit later on. Had a couple zoning certificates from Meadow Brook so far. Actually, we'll have three this month. Another one came in today, but hasn't been processed yet. So that's, that's about it. Just, I didn't include in there a couple, you know, little statistical things from, from year end. We had 27 units built again this year. We've seen that number, I think, like three separate years in the last five years, so.
So the construction value is $4 billion on 27 houses. That's just $148,000 a piece.
Construction value, yeah.
That's, I mean, that is permit value, right?
Right, right, that's just, that's just construction value, not, not assessed value or sale value. So, so those units that are having construction value of, and, and like all of the Meadow Brook and Carol Vista homes that were built last year, none of those had a construction value even, I think like 170 something was pretty much the peak for any of those. The House on Westview was, was higher, that had a construction value over 200,000. But getting back to Meadow Brook, I, I think like 168, something like that was like the highest one I saw when I looked at the report. And, you know, just doing kind of a spot check on some of the assessed values, you know, they seem to be pretty consistently in the 320 range as far as assessed value. So, you know, we're, we're, are looking at a, you know, much more than $4 million bump in terms of assessed value. So, so that was, you know, I thought some, some, some good news to share there. And, you know, Evapco itself, just that building, the construction value was over 5 million on that one, so.
Is that fully operational yet?
I would have to check their permit. We've, we've okayed their U&amp;O. I don't know if they have fire marshal approval on it yet. And we did have, we do have a letter agreement with them in terms of some, some additional wear course paving that has to be done at the site. They, they had some, a portion of the parking lot that the base coat, they were experiencing some settling. And the, the proper way to repair it was, was really going to be to wait until, until spring and get the, get the base course corrected and then put the final course down. That should be done by April, but we didn't, you know, we felt that Evapco was good for it, that they were going to, you know, follow up on what they said. So they just sent us a letter saying that they were committing to doing the final pavement on the part of the parking lot that they'd had some, some settling in. So we didn't want to hold up their U&amp;O until spring just because of that, so. But they're, so they, they still had some punch list stuff, but I can, I can check on the building permit status and see if that's been, if they've gotten the U&amp;O at the county level. So, sorry, I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. That's about it for my report.
Two months ago, you were going to check on grassroots about the dumpster. Did you get chanced?
I've gotten a little bit of contact from Andy Cohen. He's, last word was, he's working on a plan to address the dumpster to hopefully make things right with, with you guys. But he did, he did say that when, when, when it went from Cana MD to Merrill &amp; Compassionate Care and Wellness, that they essentially scrapped the interior plan for the site that incorporated that indoor dumpster. He said that, that they, when they went with the new company that got the license, they reworked the whole interior of the, of the building. And that's why the dumpster ended up going outside.
But that went against our approval.
Right.
So, so how is that even valid in any way?
Because we don't control the inside of the building, so it was kind of after the fact that we found out, oh, that's not going to happen after all. So, so he's working on it. I will have an update or perhaps we'll even have him come in next month and, and talk about that. But it's, it's still open-ended. Don't have a resolution.
They had a job fair, didn't they?
Yes.
Is that over?
I, I-
One day, I thought.
Pardon me?
The job fair was just a block.
Was one day, okay. Okay, you want to go ahead and move on to your, the rest of your report then?
Let's see, we already talked about the Hitchman. Meadow Brook is, is continuing on. They're doing, doing well out there. On Creekside, they have provided some, some additional legal paperwork. And they're still working on moving the transformer. I don't think that has been completed yet. I know they've, they've redone the pad and the conduit, but I don't know that the transformer itself has moved yet. The sidewalk on the Baltimore Street side is still an open item for them. But they have provided, provided deeds of easement. And they have also addressed the, you may recall, there was a really huge easement in the rear yards of properties closest to the storm water management pond where there's a, a big storm drain going. Kind of between the rear yards of the, the homes that back up to each other between Water Run and Amica Street. The first, first couple of homes have a huge easement that basically takes up their entire backyard. That was as much our fault for letting that happen back in the day, you know, to make the project happen. We let them do that deep storm drain and, you know, put this correspondingly huge easement there. But then once they decided what the footprint of the houses was going to be, a lot of those houses couldn't even put a deck on the back or, you know, a landing and stairs off their sliding glass doors. So they did work through that and are reducing that easement area by, I believe, 10 feet on, on either side. So it's going to be considerably smaller, so that'll free up a little bit of space behind people's houses for them to be able to, to, you know, add on or, or build a deck or something like that now. So, so the, the paperwork stuff for that is, is coming through. So there has been some activity, even though we still don't see a sidewalk out on Baltimore Street.
Well, one other thing that we really need to keep in mind too, is that barrier, break iron. Because traffic is you coming down over that and going straight to Baltimore Street to bypass the light.
Whatever became of Jay, of the warranty that, on that equipment that we were going to take over, wasn't it a 10-year warranty when we took it over?
I don't know if it was 10. I don't remember the amount.
What has ever become of that?
Well, we haven't taken it over yet.
Oh, that's what I'm wondering about.
And I've said in every conversation, you're going to have a, a maintenance obligation. Because that's better than the warranty, because the warranty's with the company, you know, the manufacturer. So they're going to have to post their maintenance. And I guess that's where we're getting to if they ever get this other stuff done is, now it's time to post the maintenance. I don't know if it's 10 years, it might be two or three.
Tell them about the pumps.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, the pumps that are 15 years old now.
That's right. So that's, you know, that's a concern.
Right. So, we've been operating it, but it's their system still, so. Yeah, that's, that'll be-
Well, you're all aware of it.
We're aware of that, yeah.
Carol Vista Phase Four, there has been talk about the lower entrance as to whether or not they want to follow through with the, the gate infrastructure down there. No one has formally come up saying, "We're not going to do it." But it is something that was on their site plan. So if they get to the point where they start talking about the closeout process for the project, which hasn't started yet, you know, we will be having that conversation about the gate. So if they decide that the community does not want to do the gate, that's something that we're going to come back before you guys to see if you're okay with that or if you, you know, want them to install the gate as it was depicted on the site plan. So that's kind of up in the air right now. I don't know that there's been, I don't know if the Carol Vista community has come to consensus on it or not. But the question has been posed, but nobody has reached out to me about changing the plan, so.
At the last HOA meeting, they decided that they were going to keep the gate. Of course, the meeting before that, they went the other way. So, but Jim, it's still kind of up in the air.
So if they don't want the gate, is there anything that the town would want in lieu?
Of the gate?
Well, there's money there. It's going to cost them a lot of money to put that second gate in. I mean, did we, did we get everything we need?
They're still doing a feature.
A feature?
Like a wall with drugs and stuff. Because remember we talked about the wall?
Yeah, I don't know if that's part of their gate discussion or not.
What I was saying is that we've had some discussion that, we don't know, is the gate just the gate? Or is it the part that's not the gate? Because they had some discussion with us about putting in a water connection so they could do landscaping and make the second entrance look nicer. And when I talked to their attorney, and this has been months ago, they were doing that. That was, so I'm not sure whether the gate is a gate or the whole thing. So I'm not sure what, what they're not doing, I guess.
And their leadership has changed over there very recently too.
So the question has been posed to the city, what if we don't want to do it? What do we have to do? And we've told them they'll have to come back and, you know, amend the, the site plan, give us a, you know-
We should keep an open mind there on something then, maybe.
So that's, it sounds like they're-
What is the importance of the gate?
To us, nothing. To them, it's-
Right, they need it anyway.
Right.
Yeah, what, what's the importance of the gate?
The appearance of it, I guess, really, compared what they have there now up at the first entrance compared to the lower.
Yeah.
You know, if they want to keep the appearance up of what they really-
Is that all we're concerned about?
That's what I was concerned with.
I mean, it's not going to be a locked up affair anyway.
No, it's not, no. Originally, it was going to be, when we first started, it was supposed to be a locked up affair.
That's right.
That they had to have a pass to get in and all that stuff.
Yeah, and that last, the first person hit the gate.
Yep. So, all right, Jim, go ahead.
George's New York is-
Could I bring up another thing? Just one other sheets.
Yeah.
For years, for years, we heard about, sheets didn't put the sign up. My question is, what's the concern about the sign? Are we still concerned about the sign?
Oh, you mean-
You mean our sign, the city welcoming to the city?
Their sign, coming into town. I've, I've heard just, I've heard comments about that through the years.
The gateway sign?
Yeah.
That was our sign.
They were supposed to put a sign up out there entering town.
That was a gentleman's-
Our sign.
Right.
Right. And the city never collected.
Right, so I mean, that's a big issue, isn't it?
They, on the site plan, they dedicated a spot out by the circle for a gateway sign.
Yeah, right.
So, and that's, that's the extent of it.
Well, I can't see any good for pushing that.
If the city wants to erect a gateway sign out there, we have a spot-
A place to put it, right.
In which to do it.
When we talked to them about that, their memory faded.
Yeah.
And, you know, don't recall saying that.
I don't think we need it, really.
Well, then your wishes coming true.
Yeah.
As you haven't got it, thank you.
Well, it would look nice, it would have looked nice if we'd have got what they were promising, very nice. But we just didn't follow through. We dropped the ball.
Right, and it's, it's hard enough to try to get the circle in a presentable-
Yeah, and I think that did get tied up with design and redesign a little bit.
I agree.
Okay, Jim?
Okay, let's see, Evapco, George's New York, they're still have a lot of, have a ways to go with their interior renovations in the, in the building. So that's, I don't know anything really new for you guys on that. Meads Crossing, we talked about it a little bit earlier, so.
Okay. Jay?
I don't have anything more to add. We have, all the things that are going on with me have nothing to do with planning zoning right now.
And our liaison to the council, which is you, I'd like to make a known that we certainly don't want to be without legal res- resputation in here regardless of what some of the council may think.
On your one.
I wish you would dress better for the occasion.
This is the budget rate.
Is that how you're going to show up at council meetings now?
And I appreciate that you really love us.
That's right.
But anyway, our need for, for Jay is, is needed. And I want the council, I want the council to know that.
That is noted and will be brought forth accordingly.
That should be fun.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Which direction should I look when I say it?
I don't know, but just-
I would look to the left to protect yourself.
But please talk into the mic. And actually, since I'm dealing with the liaison, I wish the city would invest in some more mics. It's very hard when, when Henry's trying to talk and Jay and somebody up there with one mic passing back and forth. one mic passing back and forth. And also, when the Audit Committee was here, you couldn't hear a word that was being said...
Couldn't hear a word.
Because they had no mics in front of them.
Well, that, we usually bring that over, but...
I was wondering, too, why you didn't bring it over.
Should've said something.
Well, it's kinda hard when you, when you try to listen to it because you can't come to the meeting.
I looked at it on YouTube.
Oh, I'm talking about...
You couldn't hear a thing.
Couldn't hear a thing.
Couldn't hear a thing.
Anytime we don't have a mic, you can't hear.
Well, as we, as we get close to budget, the council chambers are long overdue for an AV upgrade, and I think that's something we need to look at.
Okay. I won't, I won't hound on Jay anymore, thank you. All right, county update, Claire.
Can you guys like a bit? I just have one update. The county is in Phase One of updating, doing a comprehensive rezoning, and we're looking at commercial, industrial, and employment campus. And we are, through the month of February, we have five meetings, one in each county commissioner district. And District One is gonna be a week from tomorrow, so February sixth, at, in Tony Town Senior Center, and it's from six to eight. So I know that really does not have too much effect on the municipality, but I figured y'all might wanna know and possibly come there, show up, so... But like I said, it's just commercial, industrial, and employment campus for now. Our next phase is residential, and then after that will be ag and, I think, just ag.
Okay.
Might be missing something.
What's taking place up at the senior center?
It, it's just, um...
And when?
February sixth, from six to eight.
Who knows about it?
You do now.
You do now.
Every, we actually sent out about forty-five thousand postcards to everyone in the county.
To who?
I got one.
Everyone in the county, no municipal, no one in the municipalities, so...
Ah.
Because it's just countywide.
Oh, I see.
Right, so, and, well, I mean, I'm inviting you, I'm inviting you, so...
Countless.
Um...
I got it, I got it through email.
Yes, and all of our information, we have a website, carolrezoning.org. So anything that you wanna know, any dates, will be on that website, so, yep.
Cool.
What was that date, February?
February sixth.
Six to eight P.M.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
It's past your bedtime, don't worry about it.
And you're responsible for the refreshments, George?
Right.
All right. Other business, do we wanna tackle this tonight, Jim, or not?
What do you guys?
The night is young, let's do it.
It's supposed to snow, isn't it?
Not until four o'clock in the morning.
I gotta prepare.
I'm gonna be under the covers coming in.
All right, Jim.
It's just one less cup of hot chocolate you get to have, okay?
So I, I took a stab at, at updating Chapter Eleven from our 2010 comprehensive plan. The changes that I made are in red with strike-throughs or, or just red text underlined for the additions, so, on the first page, and I'm sorry, page numbers, I just realized did not print out, but the first page, just some minor changes under government structure. We don't require people to register with the city to vote in city elections any longer. We haven't done that for a while now.
Okay, I was wondering why that was...
So when you, when you register to vote in any general election, Tony Town residents are registered to vote in Tony Town elections. So, and I think we probably had gotten rid of that requirement before the 2010 update, but didn't, didn't see that or didn't catch that. And I just struck some language that talked about the, putting the Board of Commissioners to five members. It was in future tense in the 2010 plan, so, I mean, that's a reality now, so, just updated that accordingly.
Page two.
So the next page, updated the Planning Commission to six members and added some language about, because this has been debated regarding the...
That says six members.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't say five and an alternate.
Well, the text later in the, in the paragraph says, "And one alternate member, who votes only when another member is absent from the meeting."
So that means you have six plus one.
The way it reads, it sounds like six plus one, but...
Well, I don't know if, if we don't consider the alternate to be a member...
They're a member.
But they all, they participate in the conversation.
Right, right.
So they are...
They're supposed to be here.
A voice member. So...
So, so I said...
So there is, right.
And, right, so it's six members, and then I said, "One member is a council member serving in a," and I added voting ex officio capacity because there has been question thrown out upon occasion about whether or not the ex officio seat gets a vote, and it does, so I thought it would be perhaps a good idea to include it in here.
Yeah, it might, yeah, it might specify anything and everything.
Right, and then also added, "And one, one, an alternate member," so again, one of the six, an alternate member who votes only when another member is absent. So I, I thought that clarified things, but if anybody has suggestions, you know, we can, we get reworded, or, you know, if somebody, if you think of something a week from now, email it to me and we can bring it up again.
I think that part's fine, but you, you stayed here as Article sixty-six B, but then you go to the land use article, so which is it?
It's land use article, sorry, I missed that sixty-six B, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
And the next paragraph, again, was just trying to update for land use article instead of sixty-six B, and just tweak the language a little bit, just to say that, that community participation is encouraged, and citizen input helps ensure the vision and goals reflect the community. Because we, we haven't really been, you know, we, we open these meetings and try to promote, you know, the idea that there are comprehensive plan topics on the Planning Commission agenda, you know, please come and, and provide your input at the Planning Commission meetings. It doesn't, you know, we, we don't do the outreach that the county does with, you know, mailing things out to everyone, and we haven't been holding separate workshops, I guess, and I, I kinda felt like the way it read it before, or read before, made it sound like we were, you know, holding dedicated planning workshops, which we really have not been doing.
Jim, may I make a recommendation?
Sure.
In the first sentence of that paragraph, "Land use article that annotated code of Maryland empowers Planning Commission to develop and approve a comprehensive plan," I think it should read, "A comprehensive plan for recommendation to the local legislative body for adoption." Instead of "and recommend it to," say "for recommendation to."
So we're just adding the word "for"?
No, we're replacing "and recommend it..."
Okay.
"...to, for recommendation."
Third page?
Make those changes, and, and I can email out the chapter to you after I, you know, make the changes to it, just so you'd actually see it, or if you'd rather have it printed again for next month. Next page, I just updated the Heritage Committee to the, the current name, hopefully I got that right, George?
Yeah.
And struck the History Museum, since they're not a separate entity anymore.
Who's the, who's the event committee?
Yeah.
What is that? I don't know, it's on here, I was wondering...
That, as far as I know, they still exist. It, it, uh...
It's under Main Street.
It's, it's, well, Main Street has, well...
It says Main Street Committees.
Right, right.
I don't know that...
Well, there is a separate Events Committee that focused more on, like, the events down at the park than the ones that came specifically from the Main Street area. A lot of that is kind of, I'll say, influx. The, the Main Street approach isn't, it, it used to be a pretty standard four-point approach where you had four committees, Design, Economic Restructuring, Promotion, and Organization, where the four basic Main Street committees under the, the National Main Street model. And, and they've kind of blurred that, you know, and I, I guess, allowed more flexibility for the local Main Streets to kind of figure out what works best for them. And I think our Main Street is still kind of figuring out how that's gonna look in Tony Town, so they don't have the four separate committees any longer that I'm aware of. But I think the Events Committee still, still meets to do things like planning the, the Beer and Wine Festival that's down in Memorial Park and that sort of thing. And it probably does involve people from Main Street, but it's a larger group than just the Main Street people. So, like, Bob Mitchell is part of that group, and, you know, because it, the events typically are held down in the park. So as far as I know, that committee is still functioning, but I'll double-check with Mitch.
A separate committee from Main Street?
Yeah, yeah. So, but I will double-check that.
Yeah, 'cause it all seems to have kind of merged.
It, it, yeah, I would agree.
So under community groups, is there an interest in including the recreational groups, Lions Baseball, and groups similar to that in the city?
I'm concerned about meeting...
It is, isn't it?
Somebody, but...
So what would you suggest? How would you, what committee would you call it?
Well, I mean, it's, you have Tony Town Lions Baseball, there's...
Right, there's, there's, I mean, there's all the different groups.
There's a few, they're not really bright councils, but that's more or less what they offer.
I think, I think that we may have not gone down that path before because it, it, and I'm not sure why we, you know, why, for example, we included the Heritage and Museum Group or Chamber of Commerce in with the other things that are more city-sponsored type of groups. And it, I'm, I'm really not sure if it, what the reasoning was last time around for that. But I would think that if you start including, like, the, the different recreation councils or, or groups, the different sports organizations, then it's kind of, do you include the Girl Scouts, do you include the Boy Scouts, do you include, you know, all the other entities that are operating within, within, churches fall in? I guess, I guess the idea was just, you kinda gotta draw a line someplace, and I, I suppose these groups are where we drew it last time, but I'm, I'm certainly open to expanding it if, if, if that's what the commission would like to see.
That would indicate that there's recreation available in Tony Town, maybe, I don't know.
Although I guess we could, rather than, rather than bullet point them, we could put that into just a paragraph and list several, and then maybe list kind of broader categories, you know, that, that, you know, various, you know...
At least they wouldn't feel left out.
Sports groups and youth-oriented, you know, groups also serve the city or something along those lines, rather than try to, like, list out, you know, baseball, softball, football, lacrosse, soccer...
Right.
Yeah.
Eel hockey, I'm not sure what else.
But then, try to put it into a paragraph.
So maybe try to summarize in a paragraph form instead of bullet points, so...
Yeah.
Jim, less chance of missing somebody.
Quick question, Tony Town Economic Development Commission? I don't think I've ever heard them called that. Isn't that the Tony Town Economic Development Commission?
I think, I think they're on...
They used to have one.
Used to have one?
Yep.
I'll talk to Nancy, I think they're, I think they have been on a rather extended hiatus.
Yeah, that was a, they had a lot of meetings at one time.
Very recently, that there used to be this committee.
Oh, yeah.
And she said it's gone.
I still got paperwork on that.
Yeah. I don't know...
Did it get soaked up into Main Street, or?
No.
Dissolved.
It just dissolved.
Okay. Well, and that's fine, I just, just don't list it then.
Well, we might, we might look at this, I'll, I'll make the updates, and maybe we should just plan on looking at this again next month with the updated version in case there's some more discussion.
Well, back with city boards, we do have an election board that's not listed on here.
Ethics.
Well, there's an ethics board. That would be...
Then there's also the election.
Say that again?
There is also another board, the election board.
Right.
That's what you just said.
Okay.
I'm just...
Hey, you're good, you're good. I'll let you know if there's any more lights out.
Okay. I think I got some out here.
When you say Carroll County edition of the Baltimore Sun, is that a special edition just for Carroll County?
I don't, does that exist anymore?
Oh, yeah.
Does it?
The Carroll County one?
Well, Baltimore Sun exists, right.
Is there a Carroll County edition, or is it just the Baltimore Sun?
It used to be, like, a Carroll County edition for the Baltimore Sun, but I don't think they do that.
Well, no, now it's the Carroll County Times.
No, we get the Baltimore Sun, too.
Right, but they...
I get it, I get both of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but as far as a Carroll County edition, they don't do that.
I don't think so, that's why I'm raising the question.
They, they do, they, on, what, there is one that comes out, I think, on the third Friday, there's a special neighborhoods edition, is that what they call it now?
I don't know.
That, that might, I don't get the paper.
I get a daily paper.
I don't get the paper.
I get the daily paper, Baltimore Sun.
Okay.
I get the paper.
I'll, I'll contact the, the Sun and see if I can find out if there is a dedicated Carroll County...
I don't think mine says Baltimore Sun, I think mine says the Carroll County Times.
Well, you get a Carroll County Times, but then you get a Baltimore Sun, too. I do.
Most of the time.
I subscribe to it.
Oh, okay, well, it's a separate...
I subscribe to it.
Oh, well, then I could get the Gaspur, Gaver, or Frigga paper.
They don't distribute it. Hannover doesn't distribute it.
What, the Sun?
Hannover does not send out papers, Gaspur don't deliver in Tony Town, but the...
What papers you talking about?
The Baltimore Sun does.
Yeah, it does, every morning.
It does every day.
Okay. I'm confused, but I'll stay there, I'm starting, I'll see the light again.
Okay.
I just brought it up, I didn't, don't wanna start anything.
Oh, it started.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so we still on the media stuff?
Are we?
Or are we finished at? Or we finished that? Jim, where are we at?
Guys.
Page four.
Okay, let's go.
Unsatisfied, let's move on.
Internet.
Okay, um, just added kind of a, a blanket statement at the end for some of the stuff that wasn't, you know, that we weren't involved in, in twenty-ten, that, um, we use additional platforms to share information, encourage community discussions, such as Twitter, Facebook, and a YouTube channel, through which public workshops and meetings of mayor and council, and select city boards and commissions are shared, so, I ran that by our IT guy, he, he, uh, gave me some suggestions on the language because we don't, we don't, uh, record and upload on YouTube every city commission, so, um, he suggested that select city boards and commissions, um, so, uh, so that was just some additional language for stuff that, you know, twenty-ten, we didn't have a Facebook page, we didn't have YouTube, a YouTube channel.
And also the Twitter.
Right, I, I said that.
Although I still haven't figured out how to use it.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think we take advantage of that one too much, so, um, and the last, last thing that I tweaked in here is just, um, adding, uh, changing flyers to newsletters, um, in terms of, of, um, the local information coming out, um, and, see, Killa's television, and I added about the city YouTube channel in that last paragraph, so...
Okay.
That was my, that was my stab at it, so, we'll go back and add these edits in and, um, have a revision for you, take a look at again next month then.
Okay, I'm around. George, you got anything?
I'm satisfied, sir.
Yep.
Henry, do you have anything?
No.
All right, and then I guess the next meeting, oh, since, um, our draft, our draft minutes said that, uh, our next scheduled meeting was January ninth, since we didn't have one for January ninth, do we need to say something in this month's minutes that, due to lack of something that it was, we didn't have one?
Um, I can, well, you just talked about it, so it'll be in the minutes.
Good.
Good deal.
Because I wanted to make sure, if somebody goes through the, somebody goes through the minutes, they wanna know what happened to the minutes for January ninth.
Make sure they're accurate.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Chairman, can I still, can I get back to me again? And, um, we're in the process of submitting, uh, three grants requests to M D E, we're, we're going to be doing a project on Roberts Mill Road, which I've kinda deemed that the mini Miss Main Street, 'cause we're taking everything out and, and we're putting all new in, and, uh, so, that, that means it's the stormwater, it's the sewer, the water lines.
Sidewalks.
New roads.
New sidewalks.
Sidewalks are in there too.
Putting in new sidewalks?
We'll see, we'll see how that works out.
Where's this at?
You know, you got two whits down there.
Really?
There's two whits on Roberts Mill Road.
Got two what?
Two whits of street on Roberts Mill Road.
Tapers down at the end.
While you're gonna work at it, you oughta take a look at that.
Well, so, we'll buy a house down there to take care of that one.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering...
But we're not working, we're not working on that one, that, we are taking care of this section, and it's already up close to two million dollars, so I don't think we can do that.
Okay.
So we're submitting, that, they're being submitted to M D E, uh, this week, um, what we gotta do is really gotta impress upon them that, you know, one without any of the others is no good, we need all three, so...
Are we doing anything with the bridge?
No.
No.
So...
Well...
No.
We're not there yet.
Huh?
We're not there yet.
What bridge, you talking about Roberts Mill?
Yes.
O'Brien.
O'Brien.
No, no.
Which?
I'm talking about the, over the railroad track.
Oh, oh, the one between George and middle.
Yeah, the one that has the weight, that has the weight limit.
We don't own it.
We don't own the bridge?
Wait, what?
We don't own it.
Railroad tracks haven't...
Yeah, they worked on it.
Okay.
Maryland Department of, of, uh, MTA owns it.
Okay.
They'll work on it.
They're the ones that did the work.
They prolonged it, they worked on it, they prolonged it.
Yep, and, yeah, about a year or two ago, I think it was, yeah, they, they did it about a rehab, I mean, besides, that really is not a bridge, that, what's there is a railroad turn, like, round, like a roundhouse, that came from one of the roundhouses where they, they turned, flipped that, uh, cars around, I don't know how they did that, when they did that, but it's not a, it's not a bridge.
Okay.
It was a deck that they put right on top of that. With that, I'm done.
All right, so the next one will be February twenty-sixth, so with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No discussion on that one.
There's no discussion on adjournment.
Henry, when you have council meetings, that goes out on YouTube.
Yes.
And you should be, you, you should think about volume all the time, because that's going out over the county. Mics, so you didn't hear it?
Oh, yeah, the mics.
So you didn't hear it?
We don't have any mics, we have a Henry and a Jim.
Oh, the mics.
You had to be there.
I know. Sometimes, you know...
Where'd Jay go?